Hi, my name is Jan Ennis and thank you council people for allowing me to throw my hat in the ring in the service of the city of Renton citizens. I moved to Renton in 2002. Shortly thereafter, I was drafted into the service of our neighborhood through a community program that you all set up under the Neighborhood Program under Norma McQuiller. I've lived in many cities across the United States. I was from the East Coast and in none of those cities have I seen the participation, the amount of volunteerism, and as Councilman Taylor said, the interest level of all of the individuals to serve the community as I've seen here in Renton. For eight years, I served as the president of the Heritage Garden Homeowners Association and for three years, I served concurrently with the Renton Hill Neighborhood Association with Armando. So, I'm here tonight. I'll keep my remarks simple. I'm simply here to offer service to the community.
Okay. Yeah. No, first I was getting ready to say something. I had in full disclosure, I also live on Renton Hill and have served with Mr. Ennis. So, I guess I can keep my question to you really simple because if we select you tonight, or the selection will not be tonight by the way, but if in the process, will you run for reelection?
Absolutely.
I'm saying it'll be two times.
Absolutely.
Okay, Marcy?
Ah, in your cover letter that you sent to us, you talked about an area that you wanted, a number of areas that you wanted to focus on.
Yes.
And one was downtown Renton, which is near and dear to all of our hearts. Can you give us some of your observations and perhaps thoughts on what could be done down there since you have lived all over the United States?
In terms of downtown Renton, when I first moved here, I saw a plan that had been drafted by the University of Washington Architectural Group and it was for the, basically, the revitalization, restructuring of the downtown core. And it's been, you know, kind of frustrating for me not to see that actually take place yet. So, since the city has now gotten some grant money, I believe that the next step in that is to be able to convince those owners that will be able to have matching grants to actually spend that money and begin that process. So, although I don't think that that fixes the entire problem, that's a great step to at least get a theme to downtown and start to move business back in that direction. I think in that area, we see far too many places that become vacant and then they just get renters of any type to fill the vacancies with no real theme and progressive thought taking place.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
Okay, if you were, if you were running for office right now, what do you think you'd tell the voters was the most important problem facing Renton that you might help solve?
I would say that rebranding Renton would be the biggest problem that Renton faces currently. With the confluence of, or the convergence of all of the roads at 167, 405, Rainier Avenue, all of those things, we really need to rebrand ourselves in terms of being the gateway to the Pacific Northwest Puget Sound region. Transit is going to be a big issue as that takes place, as you all know, and I think that that's going to be the biggest issue that we're going to face in the next 35 years.
Thanks.
Taylor?
Yes, Jan, based on your assessment of the city of Renton, what do you see as the greatest area for opportunity?
I think that the greatest area for opportunity is one that I've seen Renton already do such a great job in, and that's to continue to expand the communication with the individual neighborhoods themselves. I think that all the things that take place in this city start at that particular level. There was a question in the thing that was passed out last night, or that we got last night, asking about how to increase communication. And I think that the communication from the city is very good right now, but extending that more into all of those individual community groups and having them disperse it to the individual level takes the burden off of the city itself and places it right back where it needs to be in smaller communities.
Okay, Armando?
Jan, in your application, you mentioned seeking out-of-the-box business development opportunities for residents. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I think that in Renton, for so many years, we've seen, it has appeared, or at least it's been positioned, as being a very blue collar and engineering town. And I think that there are opportunities that might be available. I don't see as much development being done here in terms of the high-tech sector, at least not at this time. And I think that manufacturing right now, at least in the industry that I'm in, we're seeing it all come back from China now and come back to the United States. And I think the opportunity to have higher-tech manufacturing, smaller opportunities, somewhat out-of-the-box for things that we're doing now offshore, exists here because we have lots of commercial space and lots of opportunity for land to be developed in that area.
Jan, first, thank you for applying. As a council member, you're never able to please 100% of your constituents. For every issue you have, you may have 10 constituents that feel one way and are asking you to do one thing, and 10 other constituents asking you to do the exact opposite. What process would you use to figure out the best research and get to the best position that you think will be a win-win for all involved?
Well, it would obviously depend on the issue, and you've got to research all of the sides that are a part of that, as well as discuss the things that need to happen within those individual communities that are going to be affected. And then, at some point, a decision just has to be made that you believe is in the best interest of serving all. And sometimes that just means you have to make that ultimate decision and stand by it. It's a leadership issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, council people.
That was short and sweet.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Carol Ann, Witsky, is that, did I pronounce your name right?
It's pronounced Witschy, and the S is silent. It's taken me five years to learn how to spell it, too, so. Well, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and to get to know the council and the other applicants as well. My name is Carol Ann Witschy. I'm originally from the East Coast, and I've been on the West Coast for about 20 years. And during my time back east, I got my undergraduate degree in business marketing and my master's degree in business management and systems. And during that time, I spent almost seven years on Wall Street, both in equity sales and research and bond trading. I also spent some time on the Commodities Exchange as well. But the warm weather and the beautiful West Coast called to me, so moved out west and spent the next eight years at Ernst &amp; Young, working in the business management side, supporting the accounting side, but primarily focused on manufacturing businesses, understanding Six Sigma, improving process models, and just-in-time manufacturing. But in that role, I evolved into the HR function, which was the communications and change management around large implementations. So, I worked with IT and kind of acted as liaison between leadership and the end-users and created marketing and messaging to get people on board, to steer the ship in the right direction, and make the most out of our large investments. So, during that time, I wound up moving more into that communications and HR role. And when I decided to leave Ernst &amp; Young and join primarily HR consulting firm, I took on the role of both consultant and salesperson. So, I had to go out and develop the business, build the business, and then deliver the services. And that led to executive coaching, leadership development, change management, and outplacement. And during the recession, I spent quite a bit of time on the outplacement side, doing, basically helping people with their career and job transitions, helping to find work for people, and then working with business owners to find opportunities locally. And that was, you know, it had its ups and downs. You know, there was the sad part of seeing all these people lose their jobs, but on the positive side, seeing it come back and seeing people land in even better places was even more enriching. Since then, I have now joined a company that primarily provides these services to small businesses and medium-sized businesses. So, I've kind of taken that Fortune 500 experience and now bringing it to the small business owners. And a lot of the work is L&amp;I compliance, employee handbooks, you know, getting people through the process of hiring and helping those first-time business owners learn the whole process of bringing people on board and hiring people outside of their inner circle and families, and being fair and equitable, and just basically taking them to the next level so that they can grow and continue to hire more people. On a personal note, I live in the East Renton Highlands. My husband is the president of our HOA, 109 families, and in the wife role, I guess I write all the newsletters, and I'm very involved in our, in our Neighborhood Watch program. We created a Facebook page for the Apollo Neighbor Safety Program. We've had Cindy Parks out twice to speak with us and meet with us. So, we're a very, very active Neighborhood Watch program that's tied closely with the schools as well. And recently joined the Next Curve. I was part of the process two weeks ago where we got to vote on what services to support with our limited resources. And, let's see what else I've done. As part of my church, we're very active in supporting the Salvation Army, Maplevine Place, and Vision House. Those are the primary areas where I've added my, donated my time and resources. And as a mother of two children, you know, my biggest goal and priority is making Renton a wonderful place to raise children and giving them all the opportunities in the world to get their educations and contribute.
Thank you. Marcy?
Oh, yeah. First. So, you've been here since 2010.
Mm-hmm.
Four years. What do you see as an issue that you would like to get involved in, or your passion with the city?
My passion is education and finding jobs for our young people. I think the biggest problem we have is, is the unemployed youth. Gen Y is coming up, Gen Z is right behind them, and, you know, basically finding those opportunities at the same time, you know, as part of that sandwich generation, you have children to raise and then parents to take care of as well. So, the challenge is going to be, you know, how do we serve our elderly while we continue to build up the next generation of kids?
Thank you.
Randy? Do you have any ideas for what you'd like to see done with the downtown?
Absolutely. Coming from New York City and having lived in other parts of the West Coast, that multi-use, multipurpose structure seems to be a great solution. We've applied it very well in Landing, where you have residential above retail and business. It's a great combination because it keeps the location active and alive at all times of the day and night versus Kent, for example, where you have business parks that are completely deserted at night and you're street racing. You know, to build downtown, you need people living there and working there and going there to shop and eat.
Thanks.
Okay, yes, thank you for being here, Carol Ann. Knowing that Renton is a very diverse community, we're 51% people of color, what do you think is one of the most important issues that we should be working on right now to create more opportunity for this diverse population?
I think communication is key, getting a deeper understanding of, you know, worldviews. You know, coming from the East Renton Highlands, we have a very Asian population, and I see challenges in getting people involved in the community. And I think when you have pride and ownership and you can get people to build their houses and own their businesses, you really get to see the results of that. And a big part of reaching out to the, to the different diverse cultures is the language barriers and getting to understand, you know, what's keeping them from being involved in the city and what's keeping them from contributing.
Okay, Armando?
So, what is the main reason that you're applying? What is the real driving force behind going into this commitment?
Several folds. Obviously, I'm raising children here, and I want to see what's best, you know, do what's best for my children. I also think that, you know, Renton's at a turning point. We're, we're ahead of the curve, you know, and part of the next curve, hopefully. I just think I have a lot to offer, especially in the human resources, job creation, and education side.
Okay. What would you say is your own personal communication style and how would you use that to interact with residents, fellow council members, the mayor, and city staff?
Coming from the East Coast, I'm pretty direct, I think, in my style, but I do listen very well, and I tend to be as objective as possible when I'm listening. So, I would hope that I would be able to listen and respect my fellow council members as I would the community in hearing their issues and then doing what I could to alleviate the situations, but, you know, understanding, too, that we have limited resources and at some times, you know, the answer's just going to be no.
Thank you.
But I'm pretty direct.
Many times, many times as a council person, there's frustrations because you really want to do something, and then the staff or the city attorney, I love to pick on the city attorney, says, "No, you can't do that. The law doesn't allow you to do that. Can't spend the city funds on that." I mean, how would you handle that kind of a frustration?
I would probably accept the facts and then find another way to do something. I'm pretty innovative that way, maybe find, you know, private investors or private funding to support something that I was passionate about. I wouldn't rewrite the law, but.
Thank you. And next up is Beth Ashers.
Hello, council members. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, and I would like to say right off the bat that I don't have all the answers, and that's one of the things that I will be doing if you see fit to appoint me. I'll be learning the job, and it will be an interesting job. I can see a couple of things facing Renton that really intrigue me. One is our growth and our growth management, and the other is building a budget that could weather another economic downturn. Growth is great, but it also brings issues because you have to extend your services. So, those are two of my passions, but you may know I have others. I serve on the Board of RIAC. I'm very concerned about the youth. I have other charities that I work for. I've always been passionate about Renton. We've lived here for quite a long time, over 30 years, and it's one of the best places to live. We tried all kinds of communities, and this is where we plopped, and I have never been disappointed. So, I sent you basically a quick resume of my, you know, job experience and my charity experience, and I'd like you to just ask me your questions.
Okay, Randy? Okay. Beth, I know you've thought a lot about the downtown. Can you give us an overview of what your ideas might be?
I've thought a lot about downtown, and what I have liked, because at one point, you know, we were researching that, what could we do with downtown? I liked the Main Street America concept. I think that in downtown, we have that small-town kind of feel. There are several ways to revitalize the town. Where my daughter lived in Long Beach, they use an arts and culture district to do that. That's pretty fantastic because when very successful, you draw from outside the town. It supports your small businesses, it supports your community, and I think definitely mixed-use is a good component because, as the other candidate for appointment pointed out, the Landing is a great example of success. You've got mixed-use there. In fact, my son is living over there now because they like it. It's walkable, it's livable, there's everything right there that you would need. And I think if we can put, keep the Main Street feel and incorporate the mixed-use and not have like a box-story thing going on, we could be very successful downtown.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, Beth.
Hi.
Leadership sometimes requires innovation, positive conscientious critical thought, and one's ability to stand alone if necessary. Can you name a time when this occurred, this opportunity occurred to you and you either had to do that for an individual or a group?
Well, the obvious one, I think, would be the library initiative. We, I had been in Friends of the Library, and I had librarians who were my friends, and we kind of had felt the pulse of the community, and they were not happy. And so, we sought various ways to alleviate the situation, and finally, we resorted to the very thing that council does as a legislative body, which is we use the law. And that's the funny thing about council. Not only is it a legislative body, but it is a representative body, and it's an undistricted representative body, so every member of council is responsible for everyone in Renton, which is an interesting thing. It's very hard to, it would be difficult, I would say, to stand up if you thought you were part of a splinter group, but to stand up for something you believe in, I am willing to do. And as we found out, you just take the pulse, you find out what the people want, you do what they require. And again, it was an interesting process because we used the law. We went the legislative route, and I don't think I would ever regret that.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi, Armand.
Is there an area in which the city is heading that you would wish to change or change directions?
You know, I think the city has changed direction a bit, and one thing I was concerned about, which is gentrification. And I think that through the comprehensive plan, they're looking at different applications of density so that we don't become just, you know, Bellevue 2 where everyone flees the city at 5:02 and we're empty and dead and quiet. I think that we're looking at perhaps average density, so you can have townhouses, you can have multi-use, you can have single-family. I think that Renton has actually turned around from my, my main concern and is perhaps going in the opposite direction.
Ed, Beth, how are you?
Oh, so far, she's okay.
Good. Is there a decision that this council's made this year that you agree with or disagree with?
Well, you've actually made several decisions that I agree with. I actually, at first, was opposed to the, you know, the zoning change, the R8, the R6, but I think there is a benefit of rethinking that while you're trying to work out the new zoning. The benefit being that people can't jump all over you and quickly submit their plans and plaits and just get completely ahead and run away. You know, runaway development is not a good thing. It does need to be planned, there does need to be planned growth and structure, and so I agree with that decision.
What is your opinion on citing marijuana shops in the city of Renton?
That's toughy. If they're not in compliance with the law, then obviously, they should be cited. Have we cited any? Do we have? We don't, we don't have them yet, do we, that I know of? Because I thought we had a moratorium on the placement of those until you agreed on the law regarding them.
The decision that this council is going to be faced with is...
I think when you say citing, you mean locating.
Locating, yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant citing, like citing them.
No, no, citing, locating, locating.
Thank you.
If you had read the paper today, you would have seen there's several cities that have made a decision that they're not going to allow marijuana stores there.
Yes, there are, and I just have to remember Paul's famous comment that the only place left, if you followed the directives, was that one little area in his neighborhood, which was really kind of funny. But I, there have to be concerns. You wouldn't want them near a school, like Plonk, right next to a school. Obviously, that's going to be one of the toughest decisions that you guys are going to face this year because there's going to be disgruntlement either way it goes. I mean, that's something that actually could split the town pretty well. I, if they're well-regulated by the state, it's the law, but it doesn't seem like the state even has a good handle on the regulation yet. There's the scary part.
Thank you. Next up is Charlene.
Marcy?
Oh, Marcy, I'm sorry. I figured I was...
You're not done yet.
I'm sorry. Come back. Much want back, Beth.
They always forget me. I was like, yeah, I'm getting off easy here.
I just figured I was the end.
That's okay. Brought the lunch back up here, sorry.
One big decision that the council's going to be facing in the next year is whether to move from the fire district within the city to a regional fire authority. Do you have any thoughts on that at this point?
You know, I think it might be beneficial. I think the Regional Justice Center was a big benefit to us. For one thing, whenever you can draw resources, we already do draw resources. As you know, we have agreements with other police departments and other fire departments, and I think it would make training easier. I think if every city has to pitch in a bit instead of footing the entire bill for training, say, a hazmat team. You know, if each city has to pay for their own hazmat team, holy cow. But if you can get a combined force and train just that particular group, and then, you know, they can go back and take it back to their departments, there are definite benefits.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Beth. I mean, Marcy is...
That's okay. I got mine in.
Now that will try Charlene. Okay.
Good evening, council members and fellow candidates. What I've heard so far has been fantastic, so I know whatever decision you make will be the right one. My name is Shar Pogue, and before I go any further, I want to let you know I had some dental work done, so I may sound like Daffy Duck. That's just the way it is today. I'm going to just go over my letter of intent real quickly. I hope you've had time to look at my resume on what I handed in, and then we can get out of here a little sooner. So, I am a voting citizen of the city of Renton. I've lived here with my kids. Am I talking loud enough?
Yeah, you're good.
No, we can hear you.
Yeah, you're okay.
Since 1998, when my twins were born, at Valley Medical Center. What I would offer would be what comes with me. I'm a mother, I'm a citizen, I'm concerned with children and education, I'm concerned with traffic, I'm concerned with health and safety of the citizens of Renton, and I would do my best to make sure that I read everything that was put before me. I know that there's a steep learning curve, and I feel like I'm up for it, and that's all I have to say. Ready for your questions?
Charlene, thank you so much for being here, and I'm just real excited when I see new faces. I think that we should always be wanting to see new people, you know, keeping a full pipeline of interested people who want to do this work, so thank you. In your letter, you mentioned that you'd like to be considered for council member so that you can serve the resident citizens of Renton by promoting diversity of culture and thought. Could you tell me what that means to you?
Sure. Culture and thought, I think, is a huge part of Renton and a huge part of its future. My children are in the Renton School District, and I'm very much aware of the population that's there, large immigrant population, large diversity, and I think that the school system is doing a good. They're educating the children well on how to accept diversity of thought and culture so that they can be better friends, reduce friction, and actually, I really think it helps to promote a better environment so you don't just have one train of thought, you have many different thoughts besides your own, even if it's a devil's advocate thought that comes in. You can always review it and analyze it and decide if it's maybe a better way of doing something.
Thank you.
What do you see the role of a council person being?
Representing the citizens of the city of Renton to the best they can.
Hi, Shar. What is your perception of the time commitment required to be a city council member, and if selected, how would it affect you?
As a project manager, I wanted to know that before I threw my hat in the ring. Thank you, Ed, for responding to my question. I heard anywhere from Monday nights and Wednesday, or maybe it was Thursday nights, if you're on a subcommittee, and I heard Don tell me he spends up to 40 hours a week. So, anywhere between there is probably what's expected.
Overachiever.
I know that I can fulfill whatever's required of me. Again, with a strong learning curve, it would require a lot of reading before I came in or to vote correctly, or what I thought was correctly. I can tell you that I have almost, I have 19 years at Boeing, so I have a lot of vacation time I can take if that's what's required. So, anywhere between 20 hours and every Monday and Wednesday night. So anywhere between 20 hours and every Monday and Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually said 20 hours.
No.
I don't want to scare everybody out there.
24/7.
Well... We just figured you were an overachiever, Don.
Let's see. I guess, what role do you think unions should play in the governance of the city?
Unions?
Unions. I mean, maybe governance isn't the right word to use, but we have, I think, five unions within the city.
Wow.
That we have to negotiate. I mean, the city negotiates with and the council sets the policy. So, I mean, there's people who think that's good and there's people who think that's bad and there's people who think it's okay. Where are you in the spectrum?
Well, I don't think it's neither good or bad. I think it's an entity in the city that you're going to have to deal with and please. And so I guess, not having dealt with one before, I guess my position would be to listen to what they have to say and do my best to make everybody happy within reason.
Now it's my turn.
Yeah, I haven't forgotten you this.
Okay.
And I'm not going to forget Randy either.
Thank you.
You understand that this position will have to run again next year?
Yes.
Would that be something you would want to do? Do you see yourself doing that?
You know, I'm not sure. I see this as a fabulous opportunity for me to come in and learn about politics with you and to decide if it's something that I enjoy or not without having to run. And so it's, to me, a great opportunity to find out if it is something I would want to reelect for or not. So I don't know.
Thank you for your honesty.
Sure.
Randy?
Yeah. In your opening remarks, you mentioned that's different things you'd like to see worked on, including one of them was health and safety. Can you tell us an idea or two that you might have or areas that you'd like to see improvements?
Sure. Thanks for asking. Because even if I don't get the position, I think I'll be back.
Good.
So I have teenagers and they go to Nelson Middle School. I live in Rolling Hills with my kids. And they don't like taking the bus. They like to be manly and walk to school, which means they dash apart across Puget Drive, you know, twice a day. And it's really a big fear I have. And so, you know, because the traffic is so bad. And I got to tell you that if you want to walk to a crosswalk, there's one way down at the light or there's one right where a curve is. So as people are coming on Puget Drive, they come at an enormous rate of speed because they're late for work in the morning and it's dark and foggy. So we tell our kids, don't use that crosswalk. Use the middle of the road because at least you can see the cars coming. And I am terrified every day. And not only is it my son, there's a lot of other kids going back and forth, right in the morning and the afternoon. Plus, you have apartments on each side of Puget Drive and you have a bus system that comes up and down. And people get off the bus and dash across both ways. So, you know, a crosswalk would, I think, someone's going to get hurt there really bad one day. So I think a crosswalk there with some big flashing lights would be exceptional. I like how we're working on broadening the roadways up there in the Cascade Vista Center, which is right on the outskirts of Rolling Hills. Putting in crosswalks, putting in sidewalks. I think that's really important.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. We're up to Robin Jones. Thank you for coming in. We're moving along a lot fast when...
We are.
But that's okay. That's a good thing.
Good evening. My name is Robin Jones. I believe I know most of you through our various meetings here. And I'm pleased to follow, Char, we actually work together, so it's kind of fun. We'll compare notes after this. You have my resume. I won't go into great detail. I'll just highlight a couple of areas there. Currently, I work for a large aerospace manufacturing as a portfolio manager. What's interesting is that I'm at the level there where we're really doing some very complex integrations. So I do what I call operationalized projects. You know, we're looking at how can we make this work in budget and constraint? And it's all about negotiating and trying to really resolve some very complex systems problems, which I think is a skill set. It comes over time. It's taken me a while to get to that point. I think it's a skill set that would fold me very well in the council. Additionally, I continue to serve in the Army Reserve. I am a brigade commander down in the LA Basin. I actually control most of the logistics units down there. Very large organization. But what's interesting at that level is I probably spend 50% of my time dealing with very complex people issues. And it's also about learning how to rise above sort of the details and letting the organization run itself and manage itself and how to put the good people in there. And I heard some earlier questions about hard decisions. And trust me, there's some very hard decisions I've had to make to stand by and I've had to do some things to people that deserved it, but I live with it and I own it. Also on the resume, I have a passion for human services. I spent a number of years both as a member and as the lead on that. I had to step away for the last reason, which was I have family now, I have two small children. So now I'm becoming passionate about the school and my wife's already starting to figure out where are we going to send the children to the school? And so that is really going to come to the forefront of my life also. That's all I have and I look forward to your questions.
It's me.
It's you.
Is there an area that the city is heading that you would like to change?
You know, I think, and a couple of years ago, I made the observation, I think that the city is challenged or is at a point where we need to kind of decide where we're at. And so I'd like to see the city kind of make a decision a little bit more, you know, are we going to really work on keeping, you know, the manufacturing base or, you know, for the downtown, are we going to make it more of a social area? I think that I would like to see that. And I think the city really has a challenge now is are we going to retain the image of Renton as a separated city or are we going to blend into the surrounding community, the King Counties, and become a broader organization? And I think that's really, in my mind, sort of the next decision that the city has to really work through.
All right. Hi, Robin.
Hi, Ed. Good. Good seeing you on Friday, by the way. What have you learned since your last race for council? What have I learned? That was a tough race, for those of you that don't know. Ed and I ran against each other. I think at the end of the day, I learned that I really enjoyed actually going out and talking to people. I did a lot of doorbelling and I learned a lot from that. And so I hadn't done that before, so I really found it was actually really enjoyable to connect people. So I'm actually, at the end of the day, I learned that. Thank you for letting me do that in that race.
Okay, you, and I want to be sure I understood your answer.
Sure.
Is you talked about the city is really kind of at a point where we decide where we're going to be business-oriented or residential. Did I understand that right?
I think so, yeah. I think that, and again, this is my perception, is that, you know, we saw that with the landing, where we're going to go high-tech, we're going to go shopping, you know, the downtown, are we going to go, you know, how do we want to shape that? So I think that's a question that is still on the table. And again, I think to the bigger picture is, you know, do we blend into King County? We had that issue in human services. Does it spread out or does Renton run its own show? And the same thing, I heard that with the fire and the police there.
We've asked a number of the candidates about downtown. You're on the other hill. And we all would like to see some changes up on the Benson Cascade Hill. What kind of ideas do you have for up there?
I think, you know, we saw that with the Cascade Mall. I, you know, when I was doorbelling and I did a lot of doorbelling in that area, I think that mall was the number one mall and I think a lot of people really wanted to see some more of the shops and what was in there. So I think that what I sense up there is that a little more of the services that connect the community, the stores, the shopping is what I see there.
Thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Hi.
We, oh, no, I...
That was an easy question.
We're looking at, you know, year over year, sort of the various Tim Iman initiatives catching up to us, particularly the 1% cap for growth of property taxes. And inflation continues to march on and we have costs going up at 2% to 3% in healthcare costs for our employees and stuff like that. What ideas would you have about how we might, you know, close the budget gap going into the future?
I think I remember this question. I think at some levels, you might have to go to fees a little bit more. You know, there's some services, if you want to, you know, target specific people, that may be a way to do that. You know, I came out of Texas, that's how they did that. You know, offhand, that's the first.
Good. Good. Thanks. All right.
Robin, you are, and I'm your last question. Thank you for being here, Robin.
Thank you, great.
You're looking good, by the way. Like that suit. You are very passionate about human services.
Yes.
Why?
I guess it would start, I actually, as a child, I actually grew up in Africa. I spent six years in Ethiopia. So I still have the memories of the poverty that you can't imagine. The poverty where, you know, people are almost literally dying in the streets. So we came out of there in about 1970, the halosolasses fell and so, but I do remember that. So, you know, from that experience, it's really, you know, the perception is nobody deserved to be homeless, nobody deserved to be hungry, you know, it was no fault their own. So I think that's really what started it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is James Flynn. And we'll start with Mr. Prince. That means we end with me. One second.
Yeah? Your name is you? Mondo.
Mondo.
There.
Hi, hello. Thank you for having me. I'm Jim Flynn. I've lived at the same Renton address for 33 years now, but I was part of the Benson Hill annexation. And so I've been actually a citizen of the city of Renton for, since the annexation took Since I retired, I've got involved with the online business. It's evolved into I'm trying to start a online magazine. I've actually started an online magazine. Anybody that's ever done a blog running will understand the motivation behind that. And I've been working in grassroots activity as part of this magazine that I'm trying to start. And I want to inform, the idea, it's called the Bensonhill.biz. And it's the Benson.biz, I'm sorry, the Benson.biz. I'm not being confused with Bensonhill.com. So the Bensonhill.biz is for communities connected to the Benson Corridor, which is actually State Route 515, which runs from the Berlin Tavern all the way, in fact, it passes in front of this building along greater. The point is, there's four legislative districts involved with it, two municipalities and three King County Council districts. So, and I'm trying to provide grassroots information for people in these communities. That's what I'm doing now and I invite you to ask me any questions about...
Hi, Jim. How are you?
Oh, Ed, Mr. Prince.
So you've been involved in Benson Hill for a long time. You've lived there a long time, 33 years.
Correct, yes.
You've seen a lot of changes. What do you think needs to be done to continue to make Benson Hill a vibrant part of the Renton community?
Well, you may remember the Benson Hill Revitalization Project that the planning commission was looking at. That would be, would have been a good start, but there's just no money for it and the people are aware of that. But they see the Sunset Park project and we would really like something like that in our area. But like you say, the problems that the city's facing now with financing, especially with the Wang Report from a few months ago, what the city's finances are going to be three, four, five years from now are not so bright an outlook. So I don't expect really anything to be done unless you can offer tax relief to a business or something to move in there. But there is a lot of empty houses still. There's still a lot of empty businesses. So I would like to work with some people and find some solutions to what could be done there.
Going along that line, what is your opinion of pay for services? By that, I mean if you're going to use the park or you're going to use some services other than emergency services, I won't take the police or fire out of the equation, that you get billed for it?
No, I think that's a terrible idea, actually, because there's, especially on the Benson Hill now, people are getting priced out of Seattle. The housing values are so expensive there and a lot of them are moving here. And a lot of them are low-income families. And what kind of a burden is this, where they're paying 17% of their income on sales tax and then have to tax them again for parks and recreation use? No, I don't, I think it's a community program, a community event and it should be distributed equally throughout everybody.
Marcy?
Was that what you were asking about?
That's what I was asking.
Okay, right.
Since you came in to the city, you've seen some changes up in your area. What do you see is the biggest challenge for the city in the next year or two?
In that area specifically?
For the whole city.
For the whole city, it's finding funding for everything that's going on and everything, especially if you want to continue the arts, I think is a big thing for the city of Renton. But where usually the arts are the first thing that goes, or maintenance is the first thing that goes after that. So I think something, you know, should be done to support that. There's areas that the city owns in the Benson Hill area that are pretty desolate as far as art goes. The transportation is another one. An improvement that needs there, that needs to be done there is the, along the Benson Corridor, the 169 now is the only route that's traveled there. It's used, again, mostly low-income people wanting to go to the hospital. So the bus is always delayed for people wanting to catch the 101 at the parking lot. So what do I think should be done about improving that transportation? And I think they should consolidate the 101 and the 169 and maybe some other routes in North Seattle where you could have a single vehicle without any transfers running from the Renton City Limits at 200 all the way to University of Washington, Northgate, whatever, for people that really need that transportation.
Thank you.
Okay.
How do you think the city of Renton could better communicate with the citizens to keep them aware of what's going on?
Okay, well, in anticipation at a small scale, about two weeks ago, I had a problem with the water runoff culvert. I have one right in front of my house and the end of it was sinking, getting lower and lower. And finally, my truck was bottoming out every time I backed out. Anyway, I didn't know what to do about it, so I went to the Public Works website, Rent Public Works website, and I filled out the little form they had. And I'll be darned. They came, two weeks later, a guy came to my door and he said, we're going to come down tomorrow. And they did a great, they were so nice and they did a great batch job, fixed up really nice. But I say with the communications, if I wanted to improve that, I sent them that message from their website, but there was one thing, there was no way to send a picture. And I think if I could send a photograph, it would make their job easier. But the fact that they weren't able to communicate back to me that saying, yes, we got your message, we're going to come there, or, so I was really satisfied with what they did, but that's just one little way I think they could have communicated better with responding to that. I imagine there's other parts of the website that have that same situation.
Good. Thanks.
Hi, James.
Mr. Timmer.
Jim, how are you?
You're good.
Okay, oftentimes, we get bogged down thinking about challenges and we lose sight of the perspective of thinking about solutions. Based on your assessment, you did a lot of doorbelling. What do you think would be some low-hanging opportunity for the city of Renton to develop some revenue?
Well, I'm concerned about losing the revenue that you do the 1% sales tax that you're getting for the annexations because I think that was part of that Wang Report, was they'll be running out by 2018, I think is when they start running out. As far as getting new revenue, they... As far as getting new revenue, the idea of, well, I hate to say it, BNO tax, you know, you guys talked about it, it seemed like the only solution. If people are going to have these things, they're going to have to pay for them, and I know there's a lot of complaining, but other cities have done very well and have BNO taxes, and they haven't lost any business from it. And I know there'll be a lot of grumbling here, but I think, I know that's a big thing with economic development for Renton, is we don't have a BNO tax, but I believe you do need a BNO tax, and if I was part of your team, I'd be willing to take that shot.
Thank you.
How would you wish to change the direction the city's heading?
I don't think it needs changing, I like the direction the city's heading, but I think there's some things we're losing focus on. The city did a great job a few years ago when they were looking at the electric car being the preferred mode of transportation, and this is supposed to happen sometime around 2020, this is supposed to take place. But, and that's a lot that has to do with climate change, and which the younger people are all talking about climate change. So I think we've lost that focus, where we're looking at five or six years ahead for energy use, and we're concentrating more on other things that may be less important in this, than the changes that we can expect in the next five years as far as energy use and transportation go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
K.B. Van Horn.
Hello, I came straight from work, so I didn't prepare anything, but my name is K.B. Van Horn. I'm relatively new to Renton, we moved here in the summer of 2010. I, my family chose to live in Renton. We had a lot of options in the Seattle area, and we were coming from Los Angeles, and we didn't know Renton from Everett. But we looked at the map, and we liked the location of it, and my husband had been working here for several months, and he sent home a What's Happening Guide from Renton. And that was one of the things that really drew me here, because I saw that this was a city that offered opportunities for families. And I have two kids, I have a boy who is 12 years old in the seventh grade at Dimmitt Middle School, and a daughter who is seven in the second grade at Talbot Hill Elementary. And I live on Talbot Hill over here. And my accomplishment, I feel, that makes me qualified to be a part of the city council is that I recognized a need in my immediate community. I saw an empty building, recreational building at Thomas Teasdale Park, and I saw a school, Talbot Hill, my kid's school, that didn't have an after-school program. And I put two and two together, and I said, "Why can't we have an after-school building program in that empty building over there?" And it took about two years, and I learned my way around city government in that process. And I have, I was given the go-ahead last year to start this program, and we're in our second program. We now have a waitlist, and we are now making a profit. So I'll take your questions.
Hey, Marcy.
I'm up.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
I'm keeping, I'm keeping little X's.
You're doing good.
Because I can't count. As you can see, we do get along, and have a good time, so... The role of a council person, and how, how do you see the role of a council person within the city, the day-to-day operation of the city?
Well, I first noticed council members at events that I go to, at neighborhood picnics, at Renton River Days, at the tree lighting ceremony, at the downtown piazza. I'm also a small business owner, I have a company that I've had for, since 2001. It's a, I make children's clothing, I do commission work, I make things out of fabric, I make costumes, I do set design. And so I was selling my wares in the downtown piazza craft show, and I noticed city council members. I noticed Marcy Palmer and Ed Prince, I've met at neighborhood picnics, and you guys are approachable. And I thought, well, you know, that looks like a good group, they're doing good things around the city. And so I started to investigate more what a city council member does. I've since learned that you create laws and policy, and you are a part of finance, and you are shaping the direction of Renton. And I'm part of Renton now, and I have some ideas, and I think I would like to be a part of shaping Renton's future.
Marcy?
You're a busy lady, I can tell you have a lot of energy. Do you feel like you could fit in the meetings beyond just the Monday night city council? We meet, have other, each committee member is on three, each council member's on three committees. Your chair, one, your vice chair. So at that time commitment, are you feeling like that's realistic for you?
Well, the question earlier about when there was, what are your thoughts on, what is the time commitment? I was under the impression that it was a 40-hour regular, you know? And whenever I have a 40-hour job, I know I also go home, and I spend time working on it at home, and I spend time, you know, at meetings. So when I heard it was 20 hours, I was a little surprised. I was hoping that, yes, if I was a part of the Renton council, I could also do Club Teasdale, and, you know, at least be in a supervisory position to train someone to take over that, so that I could dedicate more to projects that come along if I was chosen to be on city council. So yes, I do feel like I could make that time commitment. As it is now, my job is in the afternoon, so I have my own mornings. And, you know, that's a great time to go out in the community and connect with people.
Great, thank you.
I liked your story about starting the after-school program. In fact, my thought is, hmm, three years to get a new program started, that's pretty fast. Seems to always be a lot of work. In fact, I was going to ask you, so could you tell us a little bit more about what you had to do to get that going, and what you learned from that?
Well, it started when our family walked to Thomas Teasdale Park from our neighborhood. We live in Victoria Park, which is adjacent to it, and I saw this great building, and I walked up to it, and I said, "There's got to be something like a program going on, or a camp, or classes or something." And I looked in it, and there was a broom leaning against the wall, and there was a table, and like a couple chairs that were all ripped up. And it was so disheartening to think you were going to see something and not see it. And I always tell people, at that time, I actually saw myself in there, and I saw the place very different. I saw myself working with kids, and I told, I turned to my husband, and I said, "There's nothing in here, I'm going to make something happen here." So I remember I called, I can't even remember who it was. I got connected with someone who, when I had my idea, and I talked as I do, very fast and excitedly, and I was given the response, "The city doesn't have the funds for this, we can't do this. If you wanted to do it, you could do it yourself, and you would pay the rent, and it would be $1,500 a month." And at that point, I was like, well, okay, never mind. So I gave up on that idea for a year, and I started to work for this company called Eastside Enrichment out of Bellevue, and it's a company that brings after-school programs to schools. So I was driving to Bellevue every day to teach well-off children after school. And in the meantime, I was having to find babysitters for my children.
I see.
Who didn't have an after-school program, and it didn't make sense. So I also was working at the Renton Community Center. I taught a preschool Mother Goose class, and I started to get to know Jennifer Spencer there. And I told her my idea for that building, and she said, "Yes, do it." And sometimes, all you need is just somebody who believes in you. And she said, "Draft up a plan, and I'll help you do it, if you can get to the right people." So I thought about who I knew at city hall, and one of them was Norma McQuiller, because I had received a grant from her to install a mosaic. Because I saw in the What's Happening Guide, the grant program.
Sure.
And we have a little neighborhood park in our park, and I thought it would be an awesome thing for our neighborhood to create a mosaic. So I applied for the grant, I got it, we installed a mosaic, and it's very nice. But anyway, so I contacted Norma, and she said, "The person that you..." And I told her my plan, I had my plan all written out, and she said, "The person you need to talk to is Terry Higashiama, and that's the one." And sometimes, what I, so we asked, what did I learn? And what I learned in that process is you have to make the right connections, and you have to find the person. But if they can't do it for you, they can connect you to the person who can, and that's how change can happen.
Right, thank you.
Well, Randy preempted my question, so I'm going to change it up a little bit. Good question. I'm always inspired when someone from the community has a vision, and then they go for it. And based on what you accomplished with the Teasdale After School Program, part of that process, I know you had some hurdles. What was the most difficult part of it?
The most difficult part was the city saying, "We don't have the money for this." And I said, "I have an idea, that all I need is the building, give me an empty building." And I've thought of it like, you know that story, stone soup? Where they say, "I have a stone, and I can make a pot of soup." And they bring a stone, and they're like, "Well, we just need a little bit of water." So once I got the building, that was my pot, that's what I needed. From that, the community came together. People in my immediate neighborhood were so excited to see this building open again. I got so many donations, I had empty cabinets that are now full. I have to turn away art supplies sometimes, because we have so many. And we didn't go out and buy brand-new balls, the Renton Community Center had tons of unused equipment, old equipment, hand-me-downs. I'm fine with hand-me-downs, that's fine, the kids don't care. We have a parachute, we have basketballs, we have soccer balls, we have a baseball field, we have wiffle balls, we have everything now. And it was on a budget of zero, so it can be done, if the community need and involvement is there.
Thank you very much.
Armando.
That's awesome, the public-private partnerships are always fantastic. So besides the obvious reasons, what's your, like, core reason that you want to become a council member? I mean, what is, what is it that's driving you to do this?
I see that you all are involved in the community, and like I said, I see you at the same events that I go to. And I have that same involvement with the community. I chose to live here because I saw its potential, and I like what it offers for families. And I do have some concerns, you know, for the future. I worry about downtown, I don't think those businesses can stay empty forever. I think there needs to be new ideas, and I think that there needs to be fresh ideas and new blood pumped into city government.
Hi, K.B., how are you?
Good.
If you were selected for this position, there's an election upcoming next year. Would you run for, to retain the seat?
Yes.
And then would you run for reelection in 2017?
Yes. I have always been interested in politics, I'm not one to shy away from stating my opinion, and I love to engage other people in conversations.
Thank you, we're going to take a quick, quick break.
Halfway through.
And we're halfway through, so we won't be long, and then we'll start out with Patrick Hillier when we get back. So we're in recess for 10 minutes?
10 minutes?
Okay.